Standing for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. If you can stand.
Mr. President, if I could take just a moment before I do the meeting, I want to say to the mayor, to Mr. Ryan, Ms. Beer, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Riley, Ms. Calhoun, Ms. Mitchell, Ms. Sint- Sintmatic, Ms. Pruitt, Ms. Genright. I know that you have a challenge. The last two days, the Montgomery Mayor and Minister Union been in prayer. We started Monday morning at seven o'clock in front of the steps of the Capitol. We left there at twelve, went to Dexter, we stayed after seven. We came back at seven this morning and we stopped at four this afternoon. I know you have a challenge. I know each of you have a challenge. But we are praying because of the things that going on in the city. And Chief, we thank you as well for what you're doing. Don't give up. We believe that a change is coming.
Thank you.
Father, we thank you for who you are. We thank you for our mayor, our city councils, our chief of police, and for all those who are citizens of this great city. We know we have struggles. We realize we have problems. But when we work together, we can do things better. We are much better than the way we act sometimes. And we thank you for that. Give us the guidance, the intestinal fortitude. Do those things that are right. Bless our mayor, bless each one of these council members, that else they make decision, they'll make them based on what is right, what is pleasing to you. Not what I think is right, God, but what you say is right. So I ask your blessing upon each of us. And as we go into this holiday season, help us to be reminded how thankful we should be for the many blessings you've bestowed upon us. Thank you now, for we ask all of these blessings in your son Jesus' name. We ask and we pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Wagstaff. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which you stand, for our nation under God, in the ethical, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Wagstaff, and thank you guys for joining us in the pledge today. I need approval for the November fourth, twenty twenty five work session. Have emotion to adopt. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Emotion?
We did adopt.
Have emotion to adopt. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Y'all keep that pace right there and we'll be good.
Hour five forty-five. Alright.
Before the mayor message, Ms. Beer, you asked me for a point of personal approval.
I can go after the mayor though. Go ahead.
Say what?
You want to go after the mayor? That's fine.
He might be thirty minutes.
Oh, I'm not really thirty minutes.
Keep it short, mayor.
You go ahead.
Okay, alright. Ms. Mayor, mayor's message.
Hey, it's a long one today.
Oh no.
But it's, it's good news. It's good news. Good evening, everybody. Glad to see all of you here today. Glad to see all our citizens that are here in person and those that are participating virtually. Want to first just dive right in to some of our finance updates and then we'll get into some of the things that have been happening around the city and things that are going to be happening this upcoming holiday period. The Finance Department has gone through the first month of the first quarter of fiscal year twenty twenty-six, which began on October the first twenty twenty-five. For the month of October twenty twenty-five, tax collections reflected a strong and encouraging start. Several seasonal economic factors likely contributed to the observed growth, uh, growth access across these key revenue categories. The month coincided with the height of football season, including the relocation of the Morehouse Husky Classic to Montgomery, which drew thousands of visitors and generated significant local spending that was also held on the same weekend as Alabama State University's homecoming. Additionally, a series of fall festivals, artesian markets, and conferences boosted retail lodging and food service activity. That also coincided with the Alabama National Fair. October also marked the unofficial kickoff to the holiday shopping season, with early gift buying and promotional events driving consumer spending. Now, revenue from sales and use taxes collections grew by two and a half percent when comparing October twenty twenty-five to October twenty twenty-four. And there was an increase of five point two percent when comparing October twenty twenty-five to September twenty twenty-five. These increases reflect stronger consumer spending as we see modest returns to more normal growth patterns as mentioned during the last update. This trend is likely to continue through the first quarter as October through December typically captures holiday shopping, football, and festivals, and increased travel, all of which contributes to higher revenue collections. Now, lodging tax revenue increased by a healthy nine point eight percent year over year, reflecting stronger visitor activity. Key contributing factors were the October eighth, twenty twenty-five opening of the Elevation Convening Center and Hotel, and the July twenty twenty-five opening of Home Two Suites by Hilton Montgomery, increasing the city's hospitality capacity. This also facilitated a higher visitor turnout for October events and football games. The gasoline tax revenue continues to see significant growth due to collection of the additional three cents adopted by the city council, which is earmarked for road paving and bridge repairs throughout the city. Additionally, increased travel related to October events and improved compliance or reporting may have also contributed to the rise. When comparing October twenty twenty-four to October twenty twenty-five, the year-over-year increase in this revenue stream was forty-six percent. Monthly contributions, excuse me, monthly collections for alcoholic beverage tax revenue was down by nearly twenty-five percent year over year. After a sharp rise in August twenty twenty-five due to a reporting correction, alcohol tax revenue has declined for two consecutive months. Based on historical actual tax collections, revenue will fluctuate monthly, sometimes significantly due to reporting corrections which causes lags in collections or because of increased consumption and changes in consumer preferences. This completes my report on revenue collections for the first month of fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Now, I'm proud to share that earlier this month, I had the honor of representing Montgomery on the global stage at the twenty twenty-five Smart City Expo World Congress in Barcelona, Spain. From November third to the sixth, I joined US Mayor, the US Mayor Roundtable delegation, engaging in high-level conversations on urban innovation, artificial intelligence, and inclusive city building. I was especially honored to speak on the mayor's unscripted panel alongside US and European leaders and to participate in the US Mayor Global Roundtable, where we explore how cities can responsibly integrate AI to improve services, safety, and equity. By building these global connections, we're helping position Montgomery as a competitive, connected, and future-ready city. Certainly, it's great to be back home and I look forward to continuing this important work with all of you. Last week, we had a number of meaningful milestones worth celebrating. Montgomery is proud to be a Veterans Day regional site. The city of Montgomery, along with the Montgomery Military and Veterans Commission, hosted the annual Veterans Day celebration. The celebration included a parade on Dexter Avenue and a resource fair and ceremony at Riverwalk Stadium. This year, we offered special recognition to Vietnam veterans, marking fifty years since the end of the Vietnam War. Also, as part of the city's Veterans Day celebration, the city's Military and Veterans Commission announced the launch of the Veterans Memorial Park fundraising campaign and its new website. Located at twenty-three ninety Congressman William L. Dickinson Drive, the planned fourteen and a half acre Veterans Memorial Park will feature a memorial walk, flag plaza, landscape gardens, walking trails, picnic areas, and an accessible playground. This one point two eight million dollar project will be funded through a combination of city support and community donations. So whether it's ten dollars, one hundred dollars, or one thousand dollars, every donation helps us honor those who've given so much. For more information on how to donate to the memorial park, please visit MontgomeryAL.gov. Downtown Montgomery is gearing up for a new wave of investment and energy. Through the city's storefront improvement grant program, seven local businesses have been awarded matching funds to upgrade their facades and make improvements that strengthen the city's growing sense of place. Administered by the Department of Community and Economic Development through its Access Montgomery Initiative, the program provides up to fifteen thousand dollars in fifty percent matching grants to help small business owners reinvest in their spaces. The seven businesses include Twenty-three Courts Sakar Bar and Bistro. I didn't know they had a bistro at Twenty-three Court. Why'd they add that? Alright. Eugene's Hot Chicken, Dreamland BBQ, Jesus City Church, Paradigm Lounge, Capital City Bicycle Repair Service, and Ricky's. There are also some, I think, close, uh, applicants that we should consider that beyond downtown. And I've spoken to a couple of them and I've shown my support for some of their facade improvements and we'll talk about that in a future council meeting right after the new year. Now, next slide. The Montgomery Police Department celebrated the graduation of class twenty twenty-five B-two on Wednesday, November the fifth, twenty twenty-five, marking a pivotal moment in the careers of twenty-five new law enforcement officers. In addition to NPD recruits, the class included officers from Prattville, Roanoke, Russellville, and the Baldwin County Sheriff's Office, reflecting a regional commitment to excellence in policing. We're grateful for the staff at our training academy. We're grateful for Chief Grayboys and his leadership. And we're grateful for the almost one thousand applicants we have who've applied to the Montgomery Police Department as well to be a part of our police department right here in the city of Montgomery. And we wish all these men and women across this region and across the state Godspeed as they endure in their career of public service and public safety. Now, next slide. What a remarkable evening we shared at the Mayor's Young Professional Council's Second Annual Fundraising Gala, the Art of Impact, held at the Montgomery Museum of Fine Arts. It was a true celebration of leadership, service, and creativity in our city. And you had to be there to see our city council president, C.C. Calhoun, put boots on the ground in front of everybody. There's no recorded footage of that, but I'm told that it did happen.
Alright now.
I also want to extend heartfelt congratulations to our outgoing NYPD members Jasmine Camille, Christina Thomas, Brandon Taylor, Xavier Thomas, Brittany McCurry-Wingate, and Dominique Vickers for their outstanding service. A special salute to Dominique Vickers for her leadership as president. We were also proud to award scholarships to three exceptional MPS students. Ariel Doherty, Performing Arts, Lilian Spanier, Literary Arts, and Tanaya Mechanico, Visual Arts. We're grateful for their work. And let's give a round of applause to Mackenzie Walker, our twenty twenty-five Young Professional of the Year. Your passion and purpose continue to shape Montgomery's future and we could not be more proud. Thank you so much. Now, to upcoming events, we want to invite everyone, everyone, not only in the city, but in the river region and central Alabama to join us for several upcoming events that reflect the spirit and history of our city. A week of powerful events will be coming up, including the Unity Wall for Peace and Justice marking the seventieth anniversary of the Montgomery Bus Boycott from November twenty-ninth to December the seventh. There will be youth summits, mass meetings, and the Rosa Parks Gala. This is more than a remembrance. It's a call to action for all of us to continue the work of justice and equality. For a complete schedule, visit www.mgmbusboycott.com. Now, as we prepare for the holiday season, the city is hosting several Christmas events. First, there'll be the East Chase Christmas Parade on November the twenty-first. We'll also have the city tree lighting in Candy Cane Lane at the Riverfront on December the second. The Governor's Christmas Tree Lighting will be on December the fifth. And the city's Christmas Parade will be held on December the twelfth. The East Chase Christmas Parade, as I've mentioned before, I'm sorry, will be held on the twenty-first. And I covered that already. So we'll conclude that with the city Christmas Parade. But before we get to Christmas, we have other key events that will be going on in the upcoming days. The Turkey Day Classic Parade will be held on November twenty-second. We invite all of the community to come out to see the pageantry associated with Alabama State University's annual Turkey Day Classic Parade. Great bands, great organizations, a lot of fanfare. So we invite everyone to come out to that on Thanksgiving Day. And then after you stop counting calories, you can come out on Friday to the Move MGM Gobble Wobble 5K on Friday, November the twenty-eighth. That is a growing event and one that continues to bring in people not only who live in Montgomery, but many of our friends and relatives who are coming back here for the Thanksgiving break to visit their friends and their family. We also have the IS Forest Salute to Veterans Bowl on December the sixteenth, featuring teams from the Sun Belt and Mid-Atlantic Conferences. And we want to invite the entire community to come out to this ESPN televised event. While we know how convenient it is to watch it at home, we want the city and the region to come celebrate and support our IS Forest Salute to Veterans Bowl in person so we can have a packed-out, cramped-in bowl to show the entire nation how Montgomery supports not only our veterans, but supports events such as this. Now, as we approach Thanksgiving, I'm calling on all Montgomery residents to show even more compassion than you normally do and to show that solidarity with our neighbors facing economic hardship, especially those impacted by the federal government shutdown and reduction in SNAP benefits. Over fifty-three thousand people in Montgomery County and nearly four thousand federal employees in our city are feeling the strain. In response, the city donated one hundred thousand dollars to Heart of Alabama Food Bank to help meet urgent needs. This isn't just a check. It's a commitment. It's our way of saying that no one in our city or our region should go hungry. Not during the holidays, not during a federal shutdown, and not on an ordinary day. I was surprised to learn that as we made the check presentation today, that one hundred thousand dollars will go towards five hundred thousand meals. I think that deserves a round of applause for the city council and for the city of Montgomery. When we made this contribution, we had no idea that it would go towards that many meals. And so we're really grateful to everybody from the city for their support, the board, the Heart of Alabama Food Bank, all the volunteers and donors. And we know that this will go beyond the city limits in helping people. And we're proud to be an active partner with someone who partners right in our community as well. But we're not going to stop there for Thanksgiving. This Saturday, November twenty-second, we'll also launch our inaugural turkey giveaway at eight AM at the Walmart Supercenter on Ann Street. It will be a drive-through distribution, open while supplies last. And trust me, there are plenty of supplies. I want to thank Walmart and all of our community partners for stepping up to ensure no one goes hungry this holiday season. Let's continue to be agents of change through our churches, our synagogues, our mosques, our nonprofits, and our civic organizations and support those in our care. A full list of local assistance programs is available at wwwMontgomeryAL.gov. Now, as we talk about this turkey giveaway, it's important to understand that we know how to spell Ann Street. It's, it ends in a T. That's okay. But it's more important for people to understand that you can only get one turkey per car. Alright? So you can't get two turkeys, even if you got a turkey sitting beside you. It's only one turkey per car. Now, we didn't say it's only one turkey in the car, but we'll only be providing one turkey per car. So I don't want y'all So I don't want y'all to call the council members. You can't drive around, you can't put on a holiday mask and come back as somebody different. It's one turkey per car, but there are plenty of supplies for Thanksgiving. And we're grateful for Walmart to helping us in this endeavor and some of our supporting partners as well, who will be providing side supplies for Thanksgiving. So I wanted to say to the president and all the city council, thank you for your time and your work and your commitment to our community. Have a safe and happy Thanksgiving. Let's keep working together to move Montgomery forward. And to all the employees and all of our partners in the city of Montgomery, we thank you as well for all the things you do that people don't see that we know you do to keep this city operating at full capacity and really chartering an unprecedented year in twenty twenty-five. So, Mr. President, that concludes our message, and I thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mayor. Any questions for the mayor?
I got one, I got one question. Mr. Mayor, we need to thank Eddie Compton of the Veterans Day. I think that parade, and I think he was heading that up and that, I don't think. And great job, great job.
Mr. President.
Mr. Pruitt.
I got one word for the mayor, Costco. Go get your candy now so you stay out of me and C.C.'s bag. C.C. and I hold the parade up trying to get away from you.
Now, I was supposed to be off the record. We got it, we got it. We got one clarification, Mayor Reed. On the Christmas parade, it says Monday, December the twelfth. But Monday is a, you know, we've been having some conversation about the fifteenth. I think fifteenth is a Monday. And I know we talked with Jennifer and some others on where we at with that. And I know the thinking behind it was to try to allow the bowl participant bands to participate. So we need to make sure it's that they'll meet it Friday the twelfth or Monday the fifteenth.
It's Friday the twelfth. We soft pedaled that proposal and those that called more of those shots than I do weren't prepared to do that this year. But certainly understood the spirit in which that suggestion was made. So it is Friday the twelfth.
Friday the twelfth, okay. Got that? Everybody got it?
Friday the twelfth.
Alright, so any special committees report?
I have something, Mr.
Is the committee report?
No, it's not.
Go ahead, Ms. Beal.
Yes, Josh, if you'll put that on the, on Monday evening, we're going to start off. In District Two, we'll have our second annual Christmas at Eastbrook Village. It takes you kind of retro, retro, back into Eastbrook. We'd love for everybody here to come. It's from five-thirty to seven-thirty. We'll turn on our lights in the median at five forty-five. Commissioner Justin Costanza and I partner with this. So we have a lot of, all the shops will be open and discounts and giveaways. And Santa will be there. So we want everybody to come on out, anywhere in the city, just to come and enjoy and kick off your holiday season next, this upcoming Monday at five-thirty at Eastbrook Shopping Center. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Beal. Alright, Madam Clerk, item one.
Mr. President, items one through ten is the council's consent agenda.
Alright.
Motion to adopt?
Have a motion to adopt, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Item eleven, one hundred and twenty-day review of XS Ultra Lounge at thirty-four twenty Atlanta Highway.
Mr. President, can I bring my ordinance up now? So it'll be.
You talking about the one we passed out?
Yeah.
Well, we got to bring that up at the end of the. You're talking about the one on there.
Okay.
Moratorium?
Go ahead. No, they're not a moratorium, but you got to read it.
I read it, five miles.
Five miles, yeah.
Yeah, we get it at the end, we be short, we get to your orders as we keep it going. Yes, sir. Uh, this is the review on, one hundred and twenty-day review on XS Ultra Lounge, Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir. Uh, Chief, we got any talk about any calls are out there? No.
Chief Graygo?
Okay.
No calls from service?
I think we had some in August. I think we had a couple in August. We had a call in August, but we had. So we had some calls in August. You're good. Call me if you've got a problem. Don't let things get out of hand and don't let the neighborhood start calling. So it's plain and simple, you're right there by the neighborhood. Just be a good neighbor.
Your name for the record, sir. Mr. Brown, your name for the record.
Eduardo Brown.
Alright.
No further action?
HOA meeting tonight at seven.
There's no further action on this, Mr. Brown?
Correct, correct.
Good luck with your business, sir.
Thank you.
Item twelve, thirty-day review of Cooley Social Club, nine-thirty Grove Street.
Alright, Representative for the Cooley Social Club, please come forward. Alright, sir, state your name for the record.
That's your own Cooley.
I did not hear.
Mr. Cooley, speaking to that mic so we hear.
That's, that's your own Cooley. And I'm the owner of Cooley's Social Club. And they may not have to meet you, Mr. Johnson.
Nice to meet you, Mr. Cooley.
Alright, Ms. Johnson, this is a thirty-day review of Cooley's Social Save Club. Who you have with you, Mr. Cooley? Your name, you gonna be talking to the council? He gonna do all the speaking?
He's the manager. And I just tried to take over Cooley's.
Okay, alright, Ms. Johnson?
Alright, Mr. Cooley, pleasure to meet you in person. The original person I talked to was another young gentleman that was running it for you or in partnership with you. And it was a lot of complaints coming from the community about the noise and the parking originally. So I called for a review, another review for thirty days, but we couldn't get in contact with anyone. The mail was sent back for the address and the numbers were disconnected. This is at business license. So the original conversation was about the noise and things, but we haven't had any complaints since that time. But I would like for you all to update that business license information here at the city with the revenue department. And I also want to discuss some things which I wish I would have got with you privately about, but we could not get you. I couldn't get you in any form or fashion, anyone that was listed for the point of contact. But the property is at question. And so I want to call for actually the license to be suspended until the property is dealt with because right now it's showing that it's with the state of Alabama.
But I've been there forty-seven years, forty-eight years with a license. All taxes are paid, all things are, I don't know about it or dying. So I don't even know how that even come about.
Yeah, I'm not sure how. I'm not sure about your, like, what happened or who was taking care of it for you. But right now, the property is not showing as under your ownership.
It's not?
No, sir.
Well, I can show you, I can show you here.
Well, I, I, I got this information from the state of Alabama. The information came from the state of Alabama about the ownership. So I just would like to ask if you would get that situated, whatever that looks like, and then we can come back in probably about ninety days?
But now.
Right now, I don't, I would like to get that license. I'm going to ask for a vote to get the license revoked or suspended rather until.
How can you, I'm trying to find out, how can you super invite hundreds of thousands to keep my license? And what's the problem for you to say that you want to revoke it? I don't even understand.
Okay, so.
Mr. Cooley, help me, help me, speaking to the microphone.
Yeah.
I don't even understand that. Why you want to revoke something that I've had forty-eight years, paid hundreds of thousands for, ain't made a dime, and never gave a problem? Haven't called the police department unless somebody broke in my place. How do you want to come up with saying revoke my license?
Yeah, so like I stated, the original conversation with the original group that came, because this is at the same group that came.
Hold on for a second, Ms. Johnson. Madam Clerk, go ahead.
He has not been through the procedure for revocation. She's called them for review, but she has not begun the process of giving them a notice of setting a public hearing, setting a show cause hearing.
Which I was going, I was going to ask for it tonight.
Okay.
Yeah.
From what you were saying, I thought you said you were going to ask the council to vote to suspend it tonight. You can't do that.
Yeah, I was going to ask for the show cause, yes, ma'am. So I was asking for in ninety days to get whatever administratively you need done with your property done prior to, can you not hear me, Mr. Cooley?
Because you're saying something about revoking.
Your property isn't in your name right now.
Is it my name?
No, sir, with the state of Alabama, it's not showing that.
Hold on, Mr. Cooley, hold on, do you have anything that shows?
Yeah, I can show it right now.
Just have it, give it to the clerk. Do you need to see it, Ms. Johnson?
I, I, I've got it from the state, like, as of yesterday.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what that is, but nevertheless, I don't have, I'm not the state of Alabama and I can't change that for you. What I'm saying is.
But this is something I've had.
I understand what you're saying and I'm saying.
And I don't understand you saying.
You don't understand. What I'm saying is, I've tried to reach you prior to this so you wouldn't have to come here and we do it here. But your property is not showing as your property.
But license and all that.
In ninety days, I want you to come back, you, since it's you and this is your building. Whatever group was here prior, sir, I don't know if you, if you hear me.
But my point is.
The group prior, sir, had an issue and that's why it was called to the council. Otherwise, you would have never got called here. But the community said that there was an issue.
Mr. Cooley, let her finish and I'm going to give you a chance to talk. Let's one at a time, one at a time. Let her finish and I'm going to give you a chance.
Right, so what I'm saying to you is, the first call, this isn't the first time Cooley's been here. You, this is your first time here, but the group prior, whoever was running your facility prior, had issues. Staying, the cars were up and down the road, people were calling about all kinds of stuff. There was a murder that happened right in that area that transpired from your location. It was a lot happening. So I did a review and that was the first time. So this is my first time seeing you, but this is the second time that Cooley's coming back as a review to see what had, would transpire in the middle of that timeline. But in between that time, it just came to my attention that the property is not yours. Now, I tried to contact you personally several times.
But you know, you said, I own one-third of the property.
I know how much property you own and we'll talk about that too. That's why I wish we would have talked prior to. But again, that is not the conversation for today.
Okay, what's your motion, then I'm going to let him rebuttal, what's your motion?
I'm going to call him back in ninety days for a show cause.
Ninety days is too late. You didn't know all the seasons, but the money made, son.
Mr. Cooley, Mr. Cooley, Mr. Cooley, your license is not being revoked.
No.
It's not being revoked tonight. It's not being revoked. What she asking is that you come back in ninety days for a show cause why she shouldn't revoke your license. So within those ninety days, what I would ask that you guys do is get with Ms. Johnson to talk about whatever the issues may be at Cooley's Clubhouse, Social Club, and then we can move forward. It's nothing, no action is going to be taken tonight.
Right, and you need to get with the state of Alabama Revenue Department on what your properties look like. This, that's outside of our realm, but I tried to bring that to your attention.
Alright, okay.
Okay, I need clarification.
Ninety days, show cause, hearing.
But there has to be a resolution first, setting the show cause, then skip the meeting.
So I'll bring it back on the next council meeting.
Okay, so the ninety days is not going to be appropriate?
It'll be different then, but I'll bring them back for you. And Mr. Cooley, also, could you please update the contact information at the Revenue Department here at the city at twenty-five Washington for your own business? Thank you.
So you wanted me to start the show cause process the next meeting with first resolution?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That gives me clarification, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, thank you.
Thirteen, application for a lounge retail class-one liquor license doing business is Crush Bar, seventy-nine Commerce Street.
Alright, Representative for Crush Bar, please come forward.
Hello, I'm Kimberly Thomas.
Ms. Thomas? We did the public hearing, our.
I, I'd like to approve the request for her lounge and retail class-one liquor license.
Alright, I have a motion to adopt, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Good luck on your business.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Item fourteen, resolution appointing William Boyd to the Housing Authority.
Okay, on item fourteen, we have to talk is Mr. Tom Moore?
Good evening, Councilor Tom Moore.
Good evening.
Good evening. I did not forego an evening with my family to pass judgment on a gentleman that I've never met, but I am deeply concerned that the city has policies and procedures not in place to prevent a nomination like this even going forward. Did we not learn from the shenanigans two weeks ago with Donald Watkins Jr., nomination of a convicted felon to represent small businesses in Montgomery? My daughter goes to MPS and if I even volunteer to go on a field trip, I go through a background check. William Boyd would not pass that background check. He could not go on a field trip for MPS. Yet, we have a nominee for him to serve on the Housing Authority. This is not a gentleman that made a poor decision twenty years ago. This is not a stain, Councilman Mitchell. This gentleman was forty years old and has more convictions of sexual offenses than Jeffrey Epstein. Seven. And if you try and argue with me that he was pardoned, well, so was George Santos. Do you want to appoint him on the budget office? A pardon does not resolve an individual of their poor decision-making abilities. In a few moments, you're going to vote. Remember, this is recorded, video, audio, and on record. Do not set a precedent that the city of Montgomery nominates convicted sex offenders to serve our city. More importantly, I think we need to call for a motion to set a policy that says, if you're a convicted felon, you can't serve this city. I'm sorry, we're better than that. This is the city of dreams, not the city of convicted felons.
Mr. President?
So, remember, your names will forever be ingrained. If you raise your hand tonight, you're saying I, we're going to allow convicted sex offenders to represent Montgomery. Just remember, thank you. Oh, and one last thing, Ms. Ashley Norman, this YouTube feed has allowed members to comment.
What was that now?
Ms. Ashley Norman commented on the city's live YouTube stream. She just said, William Boyd, were you?
Hello, hello, no, no. You talking about what you signed up, you talking about, are you talking about something different?
Say that again.
What are you referring to?
The current livestream going on and a comment that William Boyd just made.
Okay, so I want you to speak from what you're saying. I don't need nothing about the livestream, you talk about number fourteen. We all can read that when we get a chance, just stick to it, Mr. Moore.
Just read it when you have a chance, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mitch.
Mr. President, for those that do not know, I am a ex-felon that did get a pardon from the state of Alabama that I'm able to sit on this city council. And I think I have did a damn good job on this city council by the mistakes I made twenty years ago. So when you say that a person cannot change and cannot represent this city in a positive way, I don't think that's true. Mr. William Boyd has done what he's done and it was twenty, in two thousand and twenty, I mean, two thousand and two, was pardoned in two thousand and seven. He been on every ballot since two thousand and seven to two thousand and twenty-five, you ask me. So that means the state of Alabama forgives him for any, any acts that he did against this city, I mean, this state, like they did for me. So if anybody asks a question, why would I pick Mr. William Boyd? Because when I was down, going through that storm, somebody picked me. And so when you say that you can't go, he can't go on a field trip, I worked for MPS. I worked for MPS, so with my pardon, I was able to get my full rights back. I was able to vote, I'm able to carry a gun. So don't say because a person make a mistake twenty years ago, whatever his mistake was, he cannot bounce back because I had. So, Council, I'm not going to lecture because I know many other people that are felons, that's doing, that own their own business, they run their own companies. So don't tell me because I'm a convicted felon that I can't do anything in this city of dreams because I had. I'm living my dream right now, being on this city council, representing District Six. So, Council, I'm not going to preach to you. I ask you to, I'm not asking anybody to vote with me or vote against me. I'm asking you to vote your conscience because I believe, I believe truly in grace and mercy. Now, Mr. William need to come up and repent to the whole city of Montgomery, but I don't think that's what Luke says. I think he got to repent to God and the individuals that was directly affected. Until that happened, Council, please, let's put it to a vote.
Hey, Mr. Mitch, any motion?
Motion to adopt?
Have a motion to adopt, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Three.
Alright.
I need the no votes and the extensions.
All of.
All those against?
All the posters, please raise your hand, show your hand. In a stink? Okay, you got a no vote.
I'm missing one.
So, you know, it's next...
I'm missing yours, Mr. Calvin. Why, how did you vote?
I voted yes.
You voted yes? So it's going to be four yeses and five nos.
It dies.
So it dies for lack of majority.
Miss, you count three?
Three, I thought it was three, Ms. Blaylock. Three yeses.
All right, let's go to the vote. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Three yeses.
One, two, three. It's three yeses.
All the posters have the same right.
Wait just a minute, I'm, that's where I'm missing out, is three.
Okay. Uh, any extension, abstention?
One.
One extension.
One abstention. So the motion dies for lack of majority.
All right. Next item.
Item 15, resolution reappointing Bernice Robertson to the Water and Sewer Board.
Mr. Mitch?
Um, I have Ms. Robertson here. Ms. Robertson, if you would please come to the podium.
Is she?
Oh, yes. My appointments always show up when I ask.
Oh, man.
Stop playing with me.
Good evening. Your name for the record? Although I know it, your name for the record?
Bernice Robertson.
Hello, Ms. Robertson. Mr. Mitch?
Mr. President, I'm not gonna hold us up. Uh, make a motion to adopt?
All right, have a motion to adopt. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Thank you.
Good luck with your reappointment.
Item 16, resolution appointing Tameka Miller as a part-time municipal judge for the city of Montgomery.
It's Ms. Miller here. All right, need a motion?
Motion to adopt.
All right, have a motion to adopt. All in favor, please raise your hand. I'm sorry. Need a motion to suspend the rules? All in favor, please raise your hand.
Who made the motion?
I did.
None.
Motion to adopt.
Unanimous.
All right, need a motion to adopt. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Mr. Mayor, on our next meeting, if you would, for our work session, have Ms. Miller to come and speak with the council. You looking at me, Stacy? You have something you need to ask?
Will do.
Thank you.
Just a second. Now, my ordinance ceasing.
Uh, I got two more. I ain't gonna forget you, Ed.
Item 17, pursuant to Section 11531 Code of Alabama, authorization of demolition of unsafe structures at the listed locations.
All right, need a motion to suspend the rules?
No, just uphold, Mr. President.
No, motion to uphold?
Motion to uphold.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Item 18, resolution designating nuisance abatement agent.
I'll suspend rules unless the agenda...
All right, have a motion to suspend the rule on the remainder of the gentleman? Please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt. All in favor? Please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Item 19, resolution declaring, authorizing, and assessing cost of abatement of public nuisances on various lots.
Motion to adopt.
Have a motion to adopt. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
All right, Commander Clerk, do you have the one from Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir, I do. It's an ordinance limiting no more than one fully automated car wash within five, within a five-mile radius.
All right, Mr. Brown, if you care to explain what you're trying to...
Yeah. I'm having my fifth one built in about four and a half miles and these are very specialty properties and, and, and we're... Let me, let me tell you, there'll be a day when we'll have a bunch of these things empty and there won't be anything doing with them, so I'd like to space them out more than what we got. We got five and four and a half miles. We would've had six, but one is closed, so, um, I, I'd like to, uh, put an ordinance in place if we spread them out.
Mr. President?
Mr. Mitch?
I would like to make a amendment that this is Area Pacific.
To District 1? You want just to District 1, I'll be fine.
But, um, Mr. President, I just hope that we stick to it. I know we have put ordinance and we, um, said that we was gonna do the distance and then we come back, um, and we changed it, so I'm, I'm, I'm for it. I just hope that we stick to it.
All right. Any other question on the order?
Yeah, Mr. President, is this, I mean, I understand that we wanna limit, you know, sound like there's a density problem with car washes in District 1, but five miles is this, as, you know, when we did this with the event centers, one of the challenges we had was, uh, you know, is it as the crow flies? Is it by the roads? What is the analysis? Where, where's the, what are we seeing in the rest of the city that this could potentially affect areas where we have new development opportunities, you know? Like, I've got a newly paved West Fairview Avenue. There might actually be a need for a car, you know, a car wash in the area. And so, you know, I, have we, have we, I just wanna make sure before we just put this in and then forget about it, that we've actually considered what the impact could be in other areas that don't have the car wash density that you do.
This won't stop you from putting a car wash. There's not one there.
But if there's one within five miles, I mean, that, there, I have car washes that...
Well, here's, here's the deal. I have one financed in Trustville in my day job and they're not, they're only gonna put them on major thoroughfares with a big traffic number. They, they're not gonna go in neighborhoods. They're gonna put them on the Atlanta highways, the Fairviews, the Southern Boulevard, the Eastern Boulevard. They're not Vaughn Road. They're not gonna put them on, on Felder Avenue or some, somewhere. They're not gonna do that. So they're just gonna put them on the major thoroughfare where there's a lot of cars can get to them. So we've just inundated with about five, we, not about, will be five when this is constructed. So, I don't know.
All right. All right, everybody got the explanation, okay? Need a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend the rules?
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Count them up.
Six.
Six.
Need the no votes.
There you go. That's fine.
Three.
Wish we'd have done this thing right.
Man, I was trying to put a car wash in District 1.
Motion carries.
Gas station and a car wash. You just blocked me, yeah?
All right. They can't go to Pike Road, they won't have...
All right, excuse me. I appreciate you guys voting on that, but I wanna, um, speak on this right quick. We passed something about two weeks ago about lottering on the streets, I think, getting Ms. Beard and Mr. Grimes for leading that fight. And I wanna commend Chief Grabo, uh, and his, uh, staff today.
Good job, Chief.
I get, I made a call to him today and they was Johnny on the spot. They sent the units out there and cleaned up the Southern Boulevard and right there and McGee Road. We had those people out, so it's dead work and they responding and we got that cleanup. Thank you, Chief, for your response and doing what we need to do. Appreciate you.
Thank you, thank you.
Good job, Chief.
Mr. President, I have contingencies.
Uh, Ms., Ms. President, before we do that, I just wanted to double check on the meeting time for the next meeting. We have a 5:00 meeting planned for the first meeting in December. We also received an invitation to appear with the mayor at the tree lighting, and so I don't know if...
So you guys wanna...
Unless you wanna guarantee we could be out of here by 5:45.
I can keep the agenda to two items.
I like it, say, say.
I just figured I'd put it out there just for us to consider.
All right.
We made people wait.
Would you need an ordinance bringing for us to go ahead and move that time to 10:00 AM? So could we...
10:00 AM?
Yes, sir, 'cause you have to, have to amend the...
About 8:00. Just make it at 8:00.
All right, we'll go through, we'll come back to it. Mr. Cooley's gonna draw it up for me.